Okay. That was on the agenda. We got a public hearing. Let me make a quick comment for, we got a lot, like I said, we got a lot of stuff here to go over. So if you choose to come up during, during the public hearings or in our public expression, I ask that you come up, state your name, address, and keep it to three minutes or less. So maybe we can all go home by four, midnight. But thanks everybody for coming out. It's good to see, it's good to see the courthouse fall there on something that concerned everybody rather than maybe being here during today for a ticket or something like that. Anyway, welcome everybody. And we'll get started on proposed amendment to Lee County Waste Management Facilities Ordinance. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 20, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the general district courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia. The purpose of the public hearing is to take public comment on a proposed amendment to the Waste Management Facilities Ordinance. Apparently, the Lee County Waste Management Facilities Ordinance prohibits the establishment and/or operation of a privately owned or operated solid waste management facility within the boundaries of Lee County. If approved, the proposed amendments would allow privately owned and operated solid waste management facilities, landfills, within the boundaries of Lee County, subject to sending approval of the Board of Supervisors and appropriate permitting by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. So do we have anybody here on that behalf? Guess you're first. Let me keep you.
My name is Stuella Kowback. I apologize. My voice is not as clear sometimes, so if anyone doesn't hear me, I'm trying to, trying to mess this up as well as I can. I'm sorry. Dang. There it does. Okay. Can you hear me now? I'm sorry. I live in Dryden, Virginia. I'm in Mr. Smith's district. My address is in Pinton Gap. That just means when I came here, they didn't have a box bigger than that for me in Dryden, so I had to use Pinton Gap and never had changed it. And I wish they'd changed it because I don't like to drive Pinton Gap all the time. That's a little aside. One of the things what I'm here for is on the waste management issue. There's too many, and there are many inconsistencies between what is in the newspaper, what was just read by Mr. Leonard, and what is in the resolution as provided to me by Mr. Poe. And because of that inconsistent language, I ask that you all table this issue, and I'm going to give you three points about why it should be tabled. Because I don't think you all know what you're getting into. We fought over this a long time and had a bitter fight, and I'm sure some of y'all remember about bringing private garbage in here from anywhere. At this time, Cumberland County from Virginia is fighting over whether or not Canada bring their garbage in because they passed such a resolution. And when that means that you can have private landfills, that means you can have private landfills. You all do not have any regulations or directions or standards established. And that is very important at this level. As you all know, that there's, we have the Dillon's Rule, and the state of Virginia does have statutes that gives us, the county, the right to have, to take care of our own garbage. And we accepted that right some thirty, some years ago. And which means that if we accepted our public garbage as being a function of government, that was, that was ours. So if we have a private landfill and we don't have any standards or regulations, then that means that we are liable for any damage, or we could be liable for any damage if this landfill leaks. Now, I was a part of filing private landfills, and we went over every inch of this county. There is not one place in this county that can host a landfill. It's either the, the substrata in the coalfields, it's all been broken off by coal mines. And in the rest of the county, there are caves. It's a karst area. So there's no place that we could put a landfill in and maintain and hold that, that any kind of toxins that would be coming from anywhere. And at that time, the people who were wanting to put in a landfill was telling us that the garbage was coming by CSX from the northeast. I don't know, I mean, under this resolution that you're considering, it could come from anywhere, as is Cumberland County looking at the possibility of it coming from Canada, garbage is a huge, huge national issue. The other point is that, and it's the main point, is that this resolution is inconsistent with your comprehensive plan. You adopted a comprehensive plan in 2022, and in that comprehensive plan, it specifically says that it would maintain, that we maintain the right to take, that we still say that we're going to take care of our own garbage. Now, to allow for an outside garbage company, this is the language that I wrote thirty years ago to keep the outside garbage out. And it hasn't been changed. It says, in terms of providing for a sanitary landfill, that that's going to be a function of government, and that we're going to do it in some way ourselves, either, and at that time, it was interpreted that we could do it ourselves here in Lee County, or we could do it in a region, or we tried to come up with a regional landfill, and we ended up contracting with Bristol, and Bristol, as you know, is closed now. And I understand, I understand the problem that we have, and I'm appreciative of it, and I'm really willing to work with you in any way on this problem. But we don't want outside landfills. But what I'm saying is that this resolution is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan rules. And if you pass the resolution, then we can, we can fight over that in court because the, anything that you do in your planning has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and you all haven't done that, and this does not do that. So it makes that the legal status of this proposed resolution is very much in question, and there's a lot of room for fighting and arguing about. Now, Mr. DeBussch and LMU and Beth School and Mr. Boss and all the people in the Western End are still toxic about burning toxins down in the Western End. And this, the way this is written, even though you put in, in their, in your comprehensive plans, you put non-toxins and so forth, but in here, the way it is in the resolution, they could put that incinerator down in the Western End right away. And I know for a fact, because I've worked with some people in Turkey, and there was a big effort to put some of these incinerators in the deserts in Turkey, and Turkey wouldn't let them do it. And so, I mean, this is poison that we don't want. LMU is a big asset to us, and DeBussch, you know, is very serious. He stood right here and said, "I'll spend every penny I've got to stop y'all from doing this." And he told us he had a lot of pennies. And, and we've got Beth School that is developing in the Western End. There are things that's happening down there and happening up here that would be sorely messed up if we allowed the disposal of and burning of any hazardous waste. And with the way this resolution is written, it wouldn't allow that to happen. And the third point I want to make is that this resolution is totally inconsistent with public opinion. This has just been, I haven't even had time to contact people and to tell people, and you all know, I, they hardly said, "If you're here, it must be trouble." And I said, "No, if there's trouble, I'd be here with the crowd." I haven't had time to get a crowd. But I wanted to know that people, this was clearly against public opinion. Every time the issue has been notified, the general public has been properly notified about it, and they've had time to hear about it, they have come down here in droves. They do not want outside garbage. They recognize they have to deal with their own garbage in some way, but they do not want outside garbage, and they don't want toxins burned in their county. And with the way this facility is, the way this resolution is written, they could do anything. Russia could come over here and put a landfill in here. It says any, and any, and this is happening in this world right now in terms of people trying to figure out how to get rid of our garbage. I'm glad to answer any questions, but that's what I have to say. And I ask that you, that you table, table this until we, until I have time for...
Have I got any questions?
For the people. And I assert that you would be acting illegally if you could change, if you pass this resolution tonight because of its inconsistency. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Come on, girl. Find your seat. Anybody else?
Hello. My name is Charmin Miriam. I live in Rose Hill, Virginia. My question about this is, it says, "If approved, the proposed amendment would allow privately owned and operated solid waste management facilities, landfills, within the boundaries of Lee County." Now, that's, that's, that's like a summary of what this would read. I mean, you've not provided us with an actual layout of the amendment, what the restrictions would be. Would this be only local garbage? Would this be allowing outside garbage to be brought in, as you mentioned? We, I, a lot of us in here, ask you table this until you, number one, can provide the public with a better breakdown of what this will entail for the public. You know, we don't want to be Lee County, the landfill of Virginia. You know, I don't think that's good for tourism that we're trying to pull in. You know, so, yeah, that's my request. If you please table this, that we get things more clear to the public, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Maybe you should ask how many of you are here in regard to this resolution to, maybe cut your, you don't have, I'm just...
I don't think that's important if they're just here for that one, so would leave anybody? Well, that, I mean, that's the way the norm would work.
She wasn't here for just them?
What year is it? Yeah.
Look, I live, or do you want to put one before?
Sir, would you state your name for the record, please?
Uh, Lamos. I live in Eighty-Putts Creek Road. Before, there was kind of a carousel. You can't put windmills on top of mountains and water draining. Albert Hoos, the man on the fore seat, the supervisor just wanted to put it like, you know, directly on a strip job. Now, I don't know what your plans are, but like she said, privately owned is not good. And I don't even know why that's even on there. Because if this county can't afford its own landfill, there's a big problem. I mean, if you take the landfill, you're going to have crows up our wildland, deer, you know, it's going to spread. You might say, "Oh, we got a liner." We'll crack somebody. You got possums, stuff like that, you know what I mean? It's going to carry stuff around.
And it will get into the water.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it will. And I just don't see it, like she said, you need to read, table it and see what happens. I guarantee you'll have a gym full. Y'all put that in the paper? Why, somebody ain't got glasses, can see it? If I didn't do the Powell Valley, somebody's been thrown a note. And I think it's unfair to do that. Because I know you've got property up there, Dryden, Moses has been working coal mines. He knows that. You worked for the railroad. You know, this county is feasible. But what about put that down here in somebody's pasture, draw a seal? Do you hear anything about that? Or could you? But it's hate in Lee County, couldn't it? So you've got a big problem on me. I hate it. I'm just trying to be honest. And, you know, no disrespect to nobody, but that's just, you don't want to poison the county in any way if you want tourism in. Next thing's in the paper is going to be saying landfill. You know? That's all I have to say. I appreciate you.
Anybody else on this side?
My name is Tanya Ely, and I'm from the same community that Lynn is from. And I'm in opposition of privately owned landfills for the reasons that have already been discussed. And I don't see that it would benefit just the common people. I'm just a common person. I'm not a big landowner who will make lots of money off of it, but I'm just in opposition of it. I just wanted my voice to be heard.
Okay. I'm sorry. I missed a word.
Tanya Ely from Pinton Gap, Puttus Creek area.
Close the, I just, I just didn't hear. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Winkle. I'm from this district. Folks here. My name is Peter Stewart. I live in Dryden, or I'm not going to die dead here anymore. I mean, TV on today. I made advertising, did you see, of call this lawyer, call that lawyer, get your lawsuit from Camp or two, contamination. TV, d-doo. Another experience with that, spent thirty years in Runcor, probably about twelve years at Camp or two. This problem was created on the outside of the base, but we get to take advantage of it. It actually was caused by a cleaning outfit, dry cleaners and so forth, who took their solvents and illegally dumped them. Those solvents got in to aquifers of the base and the surrounding area. Over the years, it became more and more prevalent. I personally do know one gentleman who was passed away whose wife miscarried not once, but twice for cause of the water contamination, which was true. And he really is the guy that started the bottle rolling and get everything going. Privately owned, what's the rule? These guys are going to come in, they got a food. Something happens, if the water comes to contaminate, who they going to after? Well, they going to go after the owner of the landfill. Then they going to go after who burned it from the landfill. County can't stand too much. So I agree with these other folks. I think that tabling this situation for further review, therefore, two lawyers who sit on this board, I am sure that they can get some input on what it's going to take to get here, if that's what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Amanda Ha, from Jonesville, Virginia.
I'm sorry.
Amanda Ha, from Jonesville, Virginia. I believe that the situation going on with Bristol is a total example of why they should not have this private landfill here also. Because like these other people have said, you never know what's going to happen. You don't know what, we already see that Bristol, they were talking about the smell, they were talking about all the things that they were dealing with, and we're going to be dealing with that in our county if we are not there. I also feel that this should be tabled, but more than that. I feel that this should be put on a referendum for the people of Jonesville to be able to vote on this because this was not known. It was, I heard about this by looking on the vote, early voting for Jonesville, Virginia on your mekoba.gov website. So I didn't see this anywhere else. So this, nobody else that I talked to really even knew about this. So the public has not been informed now, yes, in the first place. And I feel that this is wrong and that this should be tabled and put on a referendum for everybody in Lee County because it deals with everybody in Lee County. We should all have a right to make this decision and not somebody else. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Can you speak twice?
No.
You don't want me back up there, do you?
I don't speak for...
I'm just aggravating you.
Don't speak for the bench either because everybody gets started talking and...
I know.
We don't accomplish anything. We just have a good...
Sorry.
Try to get this figured out. Anybody, anybody else?
Hello. I'm Jeremiah Herb from Jonesville. And I was curious what you mean by rezoning. Are you going to try to rezone specific areas in Jonesville so that these privately owned groups can come in and buy a property, or what does that mean? I don't, I don't think it'd be a good thing for this area for something like a privately owned company to come in because we've seen what happened in Bristol, and we have no control of what will be brought into there.
I think there might be a misunderstanding on your behalf about, I think you're thinking that it's just Jonesville. I think you're just thinking Jonesville is the only area.
No, I'm talking about the whole county.
Well, you spoke of Jonesville. That's just what I'm saying.
Well, that paper talked about rezoning. That's why I'm interested in finding out.
I just wanted to make clear that it's not confined to Jones, I mean, it's Lee County. So I just want to make that clear for, for the paper and everybody else. But in order to do anything, I mean, any kind of business or anything, it asks for approval, and if it's not solemn for business, it has to go through a committee and, and, you know, approve before it can be...
Well, that'd be public knowledge. Might goes through a committee.
It is, yeah. It'd be, all those are public, aren't they, Dave?
Yes, they're, we're required to publish, you know, newspaper with local circulation and post it on our websites. That is the legal requirement. That's how we post all public hearings.
But this is a DODG, we've already fought this. And you can't do this without a...
Listen, I just, I just asked politely.
I apologize. You're right. You're absolutely right.
I would like this to come to a vote for everybody in the county to be able to vote on this. I mean, it was just, it was just unexpected that we even ran across it. We didn't hear anything about it. It was just coincidental that we ran across that there was a meeting.
How would you suggest that we advertise this? We put it in Powell Valley, put it on our website. What else can we do?
You can put it in Kingsport, Larry.
So more people read Kingsport than do Powell Valley?
Yeah, you can put it in there.
You need to read your local newspaper.
And your, your ads so little, you got to have glasses to read it. And we're down here about the water. We're not down here about cancer and all that. We're not down here for money.
I just want to make sure it's done in a way that considers our health. There's half a million people that live in this county. I believe they should be able to vote.
How many people?
I looked it up. Is it twenty thousand?
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand in Lee County?
Yeah.
I thought you said a half million.
Do, I accept that any of y'all live in places you might want to put a...
Listen, I'm, I'm, I'm just... I'll be nice. Listen, we can keep talking from the bench. If you keep talking, you got to be removed because we got to carry on.
Oh, I'm going to leave.
And that's not being, I mean, that's not being rude. I just say this. But, yeah, it's, I think we all understand what you're saying.
Because there's, there's a lot of places like Kingsport, they're dealing with cancers and different things, and they have a big landfill right there. So I just, I would like everybody in the county to be able to vote for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Heather Parsons. I'm Pinton Gap address, but I'm from Stone Creek. I didn't originally come here for this issue, but I've listened to it. Lee County has a campaign that's been going on for years that says, "Keep Lee County clean." Landfill's not clean. We have one of the richest water sources I've ever seen in my life, and I've lived different places, but I grew up here. With this, you're ruining the water. You're ruining the watershed. You're ruining the animals. After you get exposed to the chemicals in the county and people start moving out, then the taxpayer mix of county goes down. Property values go down. Then you have no population in the county because it's already a dying county. So we're going to lose our county, and it's going to become a landfill. I request that you table it until you come across more specifics. And as far as reading the paper, I don't, but my partner does. I get my news usually from WSWB, radio station. That could be a good idea, on proposed ideas of how to reach more community. More people listen to the radio in their car than they do read a paper. I work for a living with the county, with the schools, and I don't want to see the future generations killed and harmed by our decisions today. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. I've got questions. We know who you are.
We know who you are.
Stayed for the record.
I am. I need to talk to you, mind you.
Is this, in the mean times, has this come up? And I hope y'all will answer. Has this come up because we have lost the haul to Bristol?
I think that's a big part of it. Just to be honest, your cost went from $19 a ton to $30 a ton. So that's 11 more dollars a ton of taxpayer money that's getting sent.
Okay. Well, that's a good, that's a good answer.
But that's what we're elected for, to try and save taxpayer money, if at all possible.
I think we all are in the dark. Where did this come from? Is there a company wanting to come in here?
No.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
We don't talk to anybody. And once that you, somebody does approach us, then we would set parameters for what they could do and what they couldn't do, where they could get it from and where they can't get it from.
We couldn't.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
Where are we?
That's present in their authority and their power to do something.
I think that, if you guys can explain to us all, I mean, I don't think it's anybody here who wants a landfill to come in here. But I mean, just why has brought this up all of a sudden?
The fact that we lost the Bristol landfill.
Exactly.
And then it cost us 11 more dollars a ton of it. I mean, that's just common sense.
Well, I know. You know where I'm at. But did, is, are we putting out feelers? Are we, are we willing?
No. We've not done anything. All we did was put this in the paper to pass it. In case somebody did want to come in or if we lost our haul in the front, what we gonna do then?
Well, I mean, that's already...
We're trying to give it back, you know, just a backup plan in case we need it.
Well, Bristol was taken care of, too.
Well, I mean...
I mean, if they shut it down... Yeah, but that don't mean they're gonna stay. We thought Bristol was gonna stay.
Well, you know, waste management's a great big outfit. But I mean, you know, I just think if y'all will... And I'm not saying you're trying to hoodoo or do anything on the table. But, you know, just explain to us, I mean, everybody. I mean, am I getting, am I making any sense?
Well, I guess, I guess the biggest thing is, is like, the board members ourselves have never expressed whether we're for or against it. It's just an idea that's been, you know, just being brought out. I mean, like I say, it's a taxpayer dollar issue. Any way you look at it, it's a huge, it's a huge expense that's thrown on us all.
While we're talking about money, is the county gonna reap any benefits from the casino?
We are. But those, they have guidelines that that can be spent on.
Okay, so it can't go into the general fund?
No, they put it in the general fund. They have, they have certain criteria that we guys spend it on. And it's limited, believe you me. It's very limited. Or they wouldn't be giving us the money and simple as that.
Has it started flowing in?
Has it started flowing in? I don't know, Mr. Poe, that's...
I don't know if the first round has been approved, prosecuted or not. That goes through a commission that was formed by the state in adopting this, which the Southwest Commission basically is the Bristol Transportation District. So all the counties in the Bristol Transportation District participate in that. They all have appointees to that commission. And the commission is still working on that, as to when and how the funds will be released. Now, revenue is flowing to the state. It will flow back to the commission for that. But I don't know if they've received any funding yet or not.
But I mean, it won't be nothing like operating for the county or anything like that.
The general guidelines in the state code that, when they adopted the approval for a casino to be established in the city of Bristol, was that the funds had to be used, the funds that come back to the localities would have to be used for public safety, transportation, or education. That's all it states. So it'll be up to the commission to break that down and determine what is and what isn't eligible.
Well, I just was asking, you know, what is, you know, a little bit... I just think it's just a little bit vague. But I will throw my other two cents worth in. I hope that you all will vote no against this thing, so...
Okay. Bye. Anybody else? Okay, here none. We'll move right along. Next on the agenda we've got, under public hearing, we've got a proposed amendment to Lee County Comprehensive Animal Ordinance.
I'm sorry, Mr. Linder. You all gonna vote tonight? Do you want to stay here? No motion for... I just wanna know whether to stay or not.
You're welcome to whatever you want. I mean, I don't know. I can't answer that unless somebody makes a motion. Do you know? I don't know.
If somebody made a motion to table, you'd entertain it, you know?
Yeah. Okay.
You make a motion.
Proposed amendment to Lee County Comprehensive Animal Ordinance. The Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 20, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in John Billerjin. Purpose of the public hearing is to take public comment on a proposed amendment to the Comprehensive Animal Ordinance to increase the dog license tax. If approved, the proposed amendment will change Section 3-6, the amount of license tax as follows. A one-year individual dog license would increase from $2 to $5. A three-year individual dog license would increase from $6 to $12. A one-year kennel license for 20 dogs or less would increase from $15 to $30. A three-year kennel license for 20 dogs or less would increase from $45 to $90. So do we have anybody here on that page?
My name is Richard Schuler. I do not doubt that we need a raised adult day price. But what I'm asking you is, do we have a leash law? I think we have a leash law to go along with the dog tag. If we're gonna raise them or double them or whatever in my faith. We don't have a lot of dogs running loose. We have a lot of cats running. We don't have a lot of dogs. And I think... 150 acres should have shot today.
Well, I think, I'll answer a little bit of that. I'm not sure about all of it. But I think, didn't Mr. Fordner say that the dog tags themselves was over $2, Mr. Poe?
Yes. Basically, the cost of tags, without the cost of administration is more than what we're receiving for the tags right now.
Okay, well, then my question becomes, if it goes from $2 to $5, I think it's a little number. Will that $3 be covered?
Well, based on what I remember, it probably, it should.
Okay. I know. It's a loaded question.
It is a loaded question. And I appreciate that.
I would say the interaction that I have had with our dog warden and his assistant or if they're really good, they respond quickly to the animal portion. And I've...
Right.
Anybody else on that proposed amendment?
to the zoning text amendment to our town.
I'm gonna make a motion. Will you approve the proposed amendment to the Lee County Comprehensive Animal Ordinance?
Okay, got a motion, got a second.
Second.
Got a motion, now a second. All those in favor?
All right.
opposed?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next, we'll move on to the zoning text amendment to tourist homes. The Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on September 20, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. in the General District Courtroom of Lee County Courthouse located in John Billerjin to solicit input on a zoning amendment regarding tourist homes. The Lee County Planning Commission has requested the following zoning text amendments to the Lee County zoning ordinance. Expand tourist homes to a permitted use in the A1 Agriculture District and the R-AM Single Family Manufactured Home Residential District. Expand tourist homes from special use to a permitted use in the BJC Village Commercial District. The B1 Limited Business District and the B2 General Business District. Allow tourist homes by special use permit in the R1 Single Family Residential District. Do we have anybody here on that page?
Could Mr. Poe kind of address this issue before public comments on how it came about? And what are...
Yeah, that's fine. Because I think, just to be perfectly honest, you all probably said it before I did. Maybe before anybody else did. Because I didn't, I didn't say it till I could, you know? I got notified up ahead, but...
The planning commission has made this recommendation. They discussed this in looking at tourism and facilities for tourists to stay at. Right now, tourist homes are not a permitted use in the A1 District, which is a large portion of the county, or the Single Family Manufactured Home District. It is allowed as a special use right now in the Village Commercial and the B1 and B2 Business Districts. It's not allowed in the Single Family Residential R1 District at all. This would take it and allow it as a permitted use in the A1 instead of a special use in Village Commercial, B1, B2, it would be an allowed use, a permitted use there. So that just means that in any of those four districts, if someone came in and applied for permit, there would be no waiting time, no public hearings required, which a special use permit would require. They would be able to write a permit as long as it complied with everything else in the zoning ordinance. It would also allow tourist homes by special use permit, so that would be on a case-by-case basis in the R1 Single Family Residential District. It's just expanding allowance of tourist homes in more districts and without as much retail.
Do you know anything about their logic on why you'd have to get a permit to do it in family zoning, which you wouldn't in Village Commercial? I mean, so the public understood that Village Commercial's like Walmart's an example of Village Commercial?
Village Commercial is an area typically along a primary highway, anywhere from 200 to 400 feet wide on either side of the state driveway, where basically it's business. But it does allow for mixed use. It allows private homes and business folk.
Do you know what their logic was on why you had to get a permit to have a house in residential area?
Well, it's not just a house, but you're talking about a rental, strictly a rental property of constantly changing clientele. In other words, it's not a renter who's there all the time. It's someone who's coming in for a night or a week, and so it's constantly changed. And potentially be a little more upsetting in an R1 zone where it's strictly single-family house.
And does that include those little bitty houses like the men and I said yourself? I mean, can they move those in and make it as a permit?
No. That's totally, those are not houses. Those are utility houses. That's addressed, that's addressed in the next public hearing, actually. But this would be any kind of residential structure that's already there or would be constructed as a residential facility.
Okay, so do we have anybody here on that page?
Yes, ma'am. Hi, my name is Beverly Dotson-Grouse. I live in Jonesville. And this, this is the one we were talking about in the paper with the campers' sheds. Is that... No, no, no. Okay. You're good.
That will be the next one.
Fantastic. Just a second. I'll sit right.
Hi, my name is Catherine Fitzsimmons. I'm from...
Sorry, I'm sorry. I don't hear well.
Sorry, my name is Catherine Fitzsimmons. I live in Ewing. I was not here for this. I'm actually here for the next one. But I do want to make a note that we moved here last year and where we came from, there was a major problem of Airbnbs, mostly investors buying multiple houses, multiple properties, and raising rents and raising everything to where people couldn't afford to live there anymore. So it was a big thing there. It could very easily be a big thing here as you guys are trying to make this into a tourist destination where between Cumberland and they're playing this casino in Bristol. This is, it's a great corridor for that. But it's a problem when you're gonna have, you know, Zillow or some major corporation come in, buy up 20 properties, rent them out to people at tourist stations, and you've got people who have lived here forever who now they can't afford their taxes. They can't afford to live here. They can't afford to do anything. All you're gonna do is raise your homeless population. It's gonna be a problem.
Anybody else? Okay. Any action on the... As it's written, the special use permit on the R1. The fourth, the third, the third bullet point down to the top of the page. Do you know the answer to that thing?
I didn't hear what you said. You pushed your microphone away.
The third bullet point down to the top of the page, to allow tourist homes by special use permit. I guess my position is, you shouldn't have to have a permit to do it. You can do it in the other three, you know, the other two.
You can do it in the other three, you know, the other two, so I don't understand the need to have a permit to rent your house out while you're going on a vacation. We don't have good hotels, so there's nowhere for anybody to stay, why should you have to get a permit to do it? So the question is, can we pass this, but change it such that you don't have to have a permit to rent your house out?
The board has, the board has the final approval on this, the Planning Commission can make recommendations. The board can alter those to the extent to make them less restricted rather than more restricted. You could not add additional restrictions to it, but you could, well, I guess you could even do that, you could even make it more restricted, as long as you don't change the intent of the original proposal. As far as their thinking on that, I can't answer for that. That's a question that we'd have to take two plannings.
My thinking on it is, we need to have more places for people to study instead of less, and the more you require permits and fees, the less Airbnb leaves you have. So what are your thoughts on passing it, but removing the restriction about permits in R1 districts?
Did you say that needs to go back to the planning commission?
Well, I'm saying, if you want to know their logic in why they made that a special use, I'm making an assumption in my head of what I think it gets about, but I don't want to say that that is their logic, I wouldn't say that. Just a sec, what I was going to do is give you, I think you have 120 days from the day of this going to be here to make an actual decision, if you want to, if you want to send back to them for additional information or?
If we don't have to, I agree with Sidney, we need to remove that language. You may go ahead and pass it.
I'll make a motion to approve it, with the exception that we remove the special use permit requirement in R1 Single Family Residential District.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got the zoning text amendment supplemental regulations. The Lee County Board of Superior will hold a public hearing on September 20th, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the General District Courtroom of the Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia to solicit input on the zoning text amendment. The Lee County Planning Commission has requested the following zoning text amendment to Article 5 supplemental regulations of the Lee County zoning ordinance. Any section on and/or standalone building intended for storage or utility purposes and being transported to a given site shall not be used for temporary or permanent human occupation. In the event recreational vehicle camper arrives on the site under its own power or being towed by another vehicle, said recreation vehicle camper shall not be used for permanent human occupation. Said recreational vehicle camper may be used for temporary occupation only in the event of emergency site visitation, seasonal hunting, fishing activity, or during construction of a new dwelling. This temporary occupation shall be limited to 90 days per year. Upon a request of a representative of the proper county authority overseeing said temporary occupation, verifiable documentation must be provided by the occupant or occupant confirming the total number of days that were, that the vehicle camper had been occupied. Failure to provide proper documentation as to the total number of days occupancy may result in fines as stipulated in seven-nine of this ordinance. Upon writ request by the applicant, the zoning administrator at their discretion, may grant one extension of temporary occupancy, not to exceed total of 100 days per year. And I'll emphasize this again, I hadn't seen this either until I read it out in the paper, so just to make that totally clear.
I apologize, I thought the other one, I agree with Sidney, I don't think you should have to ask permission to live in any dwelling, but, my name is Beverly Dotson Graut, I live in Jonesville, Virginia, and I had a few things to say, I'm pulling it up here briefly about this. My first point is that Lee County is in the top 10 poorest counties in the state of The cost of real estate has gone up, I'm on some real estate in this county, so real estate prices have gone up, mortgages go up, rent goes up as well. You have a lot of people who maybe their only option is to live in a camper, or one of those sheds, that y'all are saying is not a permanent thing, but, you know, a trailer isn't a permanent property either, until they put a kitchen in it, and heating and air, and so forth. I think it is, I think it may displace a lot of people who that might be their only option, even for a temporary time. Second, we have had a ton of people who have relocated to this county, and one of the questions that I get asked when I get calls from these people are, what are the regulations? What can I not do on this property? And one of the reasons they're coming here is because we do have that permit still. People want to live in a camper, they've given up their 4,000 square foot home to live in a camper in Jonesville, Virginia, and I think that's fantastic. And, you know, to live in tiny homes, they might not be less, less look like a camper, but they're still movable, they might be a shed, whatever. This has brought people to this county, which is helping this county, which people have said has, for decades, been losing population. We are now seeing an influx of people who want to live here. It hurts landowners who have been able to create extra income by being able to rent these campers to LMU students. Being poor county, any opportunity for our citizens to be able to make a little extra income, I think would be a good idea. One, I also stand for small government and more personal freedoms, and that's one of the things that I love about this county, and one of the reasons that people are moving to this county as well, and I would hate to see it go in another direction. I don't know the reason for it, but I think it was an eyesore problem. I know plenty of prominent houses that are much more eyesores than any camper site that I have seen, and there's one right up the road from where I live, right on 58. It's a beautiful little place, you know, they live in a camper, they have a good shed. I know many LMU students who've also done that, purchased land here in this county and is living in a camper until they graduate, and then they sell the land, and it's, you know, you're just creating more revenue for this county. Stifling that would hurt this county, so I ask you not to vote for it.
I agree with you 100%, you're right on, right on the mark.
Thank you.
Most of you folks don't understand, a lot of this stuff gets sent to us through the planning or zoning commission, and we don't, we never get a chance to discuss it until we get in this meeting. We see it same time, opportunity you do this, it's nothing, we get in advance, but I agree with Charlie, only thing, you know, a lot of people will buy these little sheds like down in Rose Hill, and I think that they need to be inspected by this building inspector, you know, and for the proof, because they are, you know, they can be turned into a house. And that's the only thing, I agree with Charlie. Well, I think we're all agreeing on it.
I planned to try and make a statement before the hearing got going, or as soon as I opened it, this is the sort of thread of some of this, but we've got a speaker first, so I get a chance to do that, I'm still taking notes on the previous one. This has been discussed by the planning commission since as far back as February of 2017, and so that you will know, I'm the one who took this originally to the planning commission, and it stems out of issues, it's, I've got copies of minutes from various meetings from 2017, 2018, 19, 20, 21, and then up into this year. Where the problem arises is with the Virginia Building Code, and what is allowed, what is deemed to be a livable structure or a structure for dwelling, dwelling structure, and what is not. I've asked the building code official to be here, to, because I don't, I don't know all the building codes, but that's his job, and we were seeing this more and more, it was problems with people, I know the dealers of these utility buildings market them as tiny homes or as cabins, but they are not built to a design that meets Virginia Building Code. If the building inspector went in and inspected one of those, he would have to deny it as a dwelling, because they're not built anywhere on the standard that would meet Virginia Building Code. Recreational vehicles, and he can, he's got some information prepared on this, I would defer that you listen to him on this, recreational vehicles are totally separate, they're built to a federal standard for recreational use. They're, again, they're not necessarily designed for permanent occupancy. If you pull an RV into an RV park and get an electrical hookup, typically the most you're going to get is either a 30 or a 50 amp hookup. If you start pulling more amperage than that, you're going to kick that breaker that's feeding the power to you. If you set one up on a piece of private property and get 100 amp service entry for it, you've got the capability of pulling twice that much amperage, which, I don't know what type of wiring that you use, but if you overload the water, the electrical system, you have potential for fire. But I just want you to know, it's been ongoing, and I have mentioned to this board more than once about problems we were having with this issue. It's not been a big topic of discussion, because basically it's been, it had been looked at from the planning side. We've involved county attorney in discussions on some of this, as to what could or could not be done because of the issues that were coming up on the building side. But I, if you would, I'd like you to hear from Mr. Bush at this point, on what the county requires.
Be good. Thank you.
Chairman, how you doing? Okay, my name's Tom Bush, I'm Lee County Building Code Official, I live in Jonesville, and I want to start by taking a look at this issue of using utility buildings, storage buildings for dwelling. The state of Virginia has a building code, it's the Virginia Uniform statewide building code, it's applicable in every county in Virginia. This code is applicable to existing structures and all new construction, which are built in Virginia. The purpose of the code, as stated in Article 36-99 of the Code of Virginia, which is the Virginia law, says it is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Virginia. Utility buildings are classified by the code as a type U occupancy. This occupancy group includes sheds, it includes barns and similar structures like that. They're often used for tool sheds, storage sheds, or even used for children's playhouses, things like that. Dwellings are classified in the code as a type R5 occupancy. This occupancy group includes single-family dwellings, it includes cabins, it includes two-family dwellings and townhouses. The building code does not differentiate between dwellings and cabins. If a cabin is being lived in, as far as the code is concerned, it's a dwelling, and it has to meet the R5 code requirements. The construction requirements for these two occupancies, occupancies, the type U and the type R5 are very different. I want to go through a few of those, not taking too much of your time, but I want to show you the difference in the construction requirements for type R structures and the type U structures. All dwellings must include facilities for living, sleeping, cooking, eating, and sanitation. Okay, and because of those five requirements, dwellings must have a plumbing system which meets the Virginia Plumbing Code, it must have an HVAC system which meets the Virginia Mechanical Code, and it must have an electrical power system which meets the National Electric Code. Utility buildings are not required by the code to have any of those systems. All dwellings must be designed and constructed to support 115 mile-per-hour wind load. They must be designed to support 40 pounds of square foot load on all the floors of the structure. 20 pounds of square foot loads over the entire roof, and 10 pounds per square foot over the entire attic. Those requirements do not apply to utility buildings. All dwellings must be supported by continuous fittings under all the exterior walls. These, the base of these fittings must be below the frost line, which is 16 inches in Virginia, in Lee County, Virginia. This requirement does not apply to utility buildings. Natural light must be provided in dwellings. The total window area has to be a minimum of 8% of the floor area. Also, windows must be the double pane type, you can't use single pane windows in a dwelling. And those windows must be leakage tested, and I'll tell you why here in a minute. This requirement does not apply to utility buildings. Dwellings must be provided with emergency escape and rescue openings in all bedrooms. This requirement does not apply to utility buildings. Dwellings must have an air barrier around the exterior walls of the building. The maximum infiltration rate for a dwelling, when tested in accordance with code requirements, cannot exceed five hour changes per hour, and this is the limit energy use. These requirements do not apply to utility buildings. Dwellings must meet the requirements of the Virginia Energy Conservation Code. Some of these requirements include R49 insulation in the attic, you're talking about 16 inches of fiberglass in the attic, R15 insulation in all exterior walls, R19 insulation in the floors. This requirement does not apply to utility buildings. These are just a few of the differences between the construction requirements for dwellings and utility buildings. There are many, many others. It's plain to see that utility buildings, storage buildings, don't meet their construction requirements for dwellings, and therefore, they should not be used as dwellings. Finally, I'd like to speak to briefly concerning this thing about RVs and campers which are used as dwellings, in other words, we're talking about full-time occupancy. RVs and campers are not constructed in accordance with building code. Okay, I don't, I don't have a thing to say about construction of RVs and campers, they are vehicles, and they're constructed in accordance with the Department of Transportation requirements, how wide they can be to go on the road, and how tall they can be, all that sort of thing. They are designed for recreational use, not full-time occupancy. So if you look around Lee County, you'll see that we have some problems with these RVs and campers. You've got people that are living in these things full-time, using them as a dwelling. Some of them are disposing of their sewage illegally into creeks and streams, others have overloaded circuits or electrical services because of the, when you stay in these things a long time, people keep adding appliances and devices, and it takes more and more electricity. And... And generally, the maximum service to one of your RVs or campers, even the better ones, is about a 50 amp, 240 volt circuit. I don't have a problem with residents who use their RVs and campers in an appropriate manner. But my feeling is, and here in Lee County, that RVs and campers need to be better regulated than they are by the current code. And I appreciate Charles' attention. Thank you very much.
Tom, excuse me, I've got a question for you.
A question for me?
What kind of restrictions and regulations you think needs to be on?
What?
What kind of restrictions and regulations need to be put on campers and RVs?
Well, really, you know, this is, as the building official, this is not my, my, my playing field, you know? I build with construction and code requirements, and these, these things really are not built in accordance with the building code.
Right, right.
And, I mean, you know, the problem that we have, and I, I'm, I see it from both sides. You know, I see that there's advantages to having, people having RVs, and I've seen some beautiful ones set up really nice around the county. But you go to the same, the opposite way, and I know in Keokhae up there, we've got an issue up there with three or four campers set up on the same parcel of land. One guy owns the land, he invited some of his friends there, and that sort of thing, and ended up being more of a drug community than anything else. And because of the regulations, it's difficult for us to do anything about that. So, you know, I don't know what the regulations really need to be on RVs and campers, but somehow or another, we have to have a better, a better way of monitoring that and adapting to problems that comes up in the community.
Tom, I have a question.
Sure.
If somebody comes to you, they set up a new, I'll call it that, not a building. They set up one of these, they tell you they want to live in it. If they put the proper insulation in and the proper wiring, and it's got extra trusses, or is there some way to build it to spec so you can pass it so they get electricity?
I've not seen one yet, one yet, that was modified that would meet the building code.
Do you know anyone who's tried to modify it so it will meet the building code?
I know a lady who tried it here in Lee County about seven years ago. And last time I talked to her, she spent $35,000 on it, and she hadn't got it yet before it made the building code.
So does the issue come up when, if somebody goes out and they tell you, hey, I want an electric hookup, you've got to approve every electric hookup, right? And you want to approve it if they tell you they're going to live in it?
Well, here's the deal. There is, you've got to understand how this is broken down, really. If you take, if you take, and this is, and this is partly, I guess, part of the zoning ordinance here, how it sort of came into play here. Unfortunately, the building code doesn't regulate utility buildings that are less than 256 square feet, okay? Permit's not required, as long as those people are going to use it for a utility building, okay? But if that utility building, they buy it, they put it out here somewhere, they want a little electricity put in, we would probably put in 100 amp electrical service into that building. But we have no way of tracking what that building is being used for. Because we didn't issue a permit, there's no way we can go back on it after the electrical service is installed. Buildings that are larger than 256 square feet, they have to have a permit, and so we can sort of regulate those things. But I think the zoning, zoning people here are just trying to get everything together under ordinance, so that we're regulating both the small ones and the large ones.
So if this were passed, who would, who would count the number of days somebody's been in an RV? Is that Richard's department, or is that yours?
No, it's not mine. I don't have anything to do with zoning.
So have you talked to him about it as a practical matter? Is he going to go out there and look every day to see if they're living in it today?
That's, I don't, you guys, you know, I'm not going to ask the question like that. I don't know what his work schedule is or what he does, you know? I know, I'm not, I've got more than I can handle. Me and Clint's got more than we can handle already with all the building that's going on in Lee County, okay? We say, really, last month, we had 85 inspections, okay? Normal, big, busy month would be 60, and so we've been discovered up. So, you know, I can't speak for Richard, I wouldn't. But I think there's issues, you know, some way on the, again, I'm going to repeat, but I don't think storage buildings should be used for dwellings. They don't meet code requirements for dwellings, and we're just asking for a bunch of trouble for man. How are you going to dwell it, and how is the, how are we going to meet the Virginia Code residential? Okay? People are going to buy them, they're going to say, well, zoning allows us to buy them, but then I've got to turn around and tell them, well, to be a home, there's all these things that you have to meet, right? And you can't live in it until you get these things done. And that's an issue. I don't like being rude to people. I don't like telling people they can't do something like that. It's just the situation we're in here, okay? These, these structures are advertised as being cabins or small, and townhouses, things like that. In Kentucky, they have a different, different code than we do, okay? They have International Building Code there, they have International Building Code in Tennessee. And that code allows people to live in those cabins, okay? So people see that being done over in Kentucky, and they see it being done in Tennessee, it's not legal here. You see what I'm saying? This is what we're, what we're up against. And I, you know, I know for a fact that we need housing. Lord help us, we need housing in Lee County. We need more low-income housing, but this is my point.
Jobs.
Yeah. So, you know, that's my feeling about it, guys. I'll put it as best I can. So.
I'm Justin Harrison, I live in St. Joseph's Church, and like he was saying, they don't reach the requirements or whatever. Tell me what one thing a camper don't have, or does have, that, your trailer. Your normal trailer you go to law and buy is everything. I feel like the camper would be built better because it makes the transport. You buy a single trailer. If anybody's ever moved trailers, you know, you've got some trailers up there. You move them. You have to, takes a lot of wear and tear on them. But these campers were built and designed to travel wherever you want to in this world. And go to the tiny homes or little sheds, y'all was calling, you know, where's the jobs in here? They, us parking it, they travel. I drive a kees foot every day, just to make a little toilet all around. Right now, I am living in the camper. I've got my power hooked up, I've done, got my building code, I've done everything, supposed to do right, you know? And I think, you know, at that point, I don't see the big deal. Is it because, you know, that guy ain't coming out looking at it, you know? How is it up to that guy to tell me that I can't live somewhere? You know? You, I mean, you're at that point, that you're getting kicked out of your home, you know? You named one job, you named one job in Lee County itself. That we can go and get a job, and go out here, go to the bank, see if we can get along to buy a house. Ain't nothing, everybody in this room travels through work, wants to leave our homes, to go somewhere else, different state, different county, just to come back here and survive. And, you know, you call them shacks or whatever, cabins, you know? You, everybody in this world, some people want to make it, some people don't want to clean that much, some people would be satisfied with a little more room for them. So how is it, whoever's against it, can stand here and tell us what you can and cannot live in? You know, I understand the requirements, and I totally agree with, don't dump your stuff in the creeks. But you go through St. Joseph's, all these other houses, you know, you make, you sit all these building codes. Will you just go look at these rundown places right here? You're going to tear them down, condemn them. Half of your property owners might condemn their places just because they don't meet this, there's a requirement code, you know?
But I, I understand what you're saying, but Tom's behind, that's not his building code, that's.
But I'm just saying, I don't know who he is.
He don't, he goes by Virginia code.
Right.
He doesn't go by Tom's, he goes by Virginia.
Or New Construction.
Or, you know, you've got people that has to live in these buildings to build their home, and y'all going to say, what is it, 90 days?
100 days.
108 days? You know, our children go to school 108 days, you know? But they have to live, it takes longer to build a home than that, just simply, you know, and these little almish buildings and stuff, you know, I have two on my property.
Two what?
I have two on my property.
Two what? Almish?
Almish buildings.
People?
But nobody lives in them, not a building.
Buildings.
These shacks y'all call them. But they are for storage and stuff, but also have the camper, that I'm building a home set there, and I need to know the requirements, because I'm getting that permit right now. Are y'all going to be able, or whoever, send the law there to evict me, I'm something I just went and spent $25,000 on? $1,500 for my power, come down here, get building permits and everything? I mean, how many of those?
Pay county taxes, dude.
Yeah, and pay taxes on the water? How is it that you don't tell me why I can build on my own if I'm paying y'all taxes, or the county, or whoever?
Well, you know, like I say, I think, you know, these were, this stuff was sent to us, you know, and you all sent them what we did, so, you know, it's, it's not like we're not hearing it. I mean, I understand, I think everybody up here understands, but, you know, it's, those are decisions we've got to try to work through some kind of way, you know, to make it right for everybody.
Well, I think.
But it's not something we set up here and just dreamed up.
Right.
I'll tell you that.
Right. But I think that it shouldn't go to you all to vote on. I think us as a people should be able to vote on it, and I think, yeah, there should be a little bit of regulations to put it there. Because you just can't just throw your stuff back in the clay creates and put water all that, or stand all that. But at the same time, I think us as a community or Lee County should come be able to vote for it, and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Harrison, thank you. We got Lynn Stuckert.
Thank you.
American Michael Lynn. We don't live in an RV or an almish building. We live in a house.
A house.
You have an office in Stone Creek. Does your septic run out into the creek? You have a septic. Okay, ours runs out into the creek. Apparently, it's something called Grandfather Inn, but it runs into the creek and we have electric. The problem is, is I went down to the county, because we were thinking we would like to put a septic system in, you know, to be better on the water and all those kind of things. They laughed at me. They said, because I live in a rocky district, rocky station district, that wasn't possible. So if my home burns down, I can't put an almish building on it, I can't put an RV on it. I just have a very greedy piece of land that has been burned down whole lot. So I understand the regulations and all of that, but at another point, if we can get a committee to come up with replanning, how these things can come into place as far as electrical hookups, and what perks and what doesn't perk for a septic, because I've seen people come up with very greedy ways with septic. I grew up on Sand Lake. My parents have a septic system. I know a man who is 70 years old, and he has lived in a camper for 35 years on that property, and he lives very well. He has a running septic, he has a running septic that was put in before the code became a thing in Lee County. He has running water, he has viability, he ran a business from there. It's perfectly acceptable. We are Americans, and we're given the right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. And my happiness is to live in a 100-year-old house that looks like a cabin, because I like that. That is my pursuit of happiness. I don't know about you all, but I wouldn't want someone to tell me you have to live in a cabin, because I want you to live in a 4,000-square home that's two-story with a pool and a big yard. I wouldn't want somebody to tell me I have to be in a shack because I want to be here. So there's no reason for someone to tell me that I can't be in a shack, or in a cabin, or an almish building, or whatever you guys want to call it, an RV, because everyone else is living in a 4,000-square-foot home. I work for the county, I make $1,000 a month for what I do, in a self-contained classroom. I can tell you that's not a lot of money for what I do.
Of course.
And that's in the school system. But that is one of the best jobs I can get, because I'm currently working on a bachelor's degree to become a teacher. Even with that salary, I can't afford a home in this county, because you cannot find anyone to finance a home. And then you have rental properties, not picking on anybody on this panel, but we have rental properties. The price of rent on some of these homes is $800 a month, $500 a month, that's half what I make. That's just my rent. That's not including electric, which has gone up, that's not including a water bill, if you have one, that has gone up. Everything's gone up, and it's not plausible to live in a home sometimes, even if you're renting and not owning. So I think that needs to come into consideration for the board, because if you guys vote yes on this ordinance, you're going to make a lot of people homeless in this county, and they're going to go to Kentucky, Tennessee, as he mentioned, so they can go under the international code, or the national code. That's just what's going to happen. They're going to move to a better place that they can live the way they want to live. And that's all I've got to say on that one.